I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Austin?
Present.
Councilmember Pashusta?
Present.
Fisher?
Present.
Baskin?
Present.
Helly?
Present.
Waller?
Present.
King? We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Adam, one is a motion for adoption of the agenda with the addition of 21.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Pose number two is a motion approving the minutes from August 5th, 2019, to meeting. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Both under recognitions and award. Cedar River District, Justin Hanson. Justin, you can talk about the trout?
I've got my partner in crime here, Adam King. Adam is the district manager with the Dodge Soil and Water Conservation District. So together, we're going to tag team this a little bit tonight. But we want to give you guys an update on the watershed planning project that we've been doing in cooperation with the city of Austin. And I think we talked just a little bit about this a few months ago, but we're advanced far enough into the planning process now. We're actually in kind of the final stages and taking comments, public comments. So we're just going to give a little bit of an overview on that. And then we had some other updates, I think, that we'll kind of be able to tie into at the end. We're just going to take a few minutes. I understand you've got a lot of stuff going on tonight, but just a quick overview, the idea that we'll take some questions at the end. So Adam's just going to give you kind of a summary of the planning process. Adam's been kind of our quarterback on this project. He's been doing a lot of the leadership, which has been helping us out a great deal and keeping us focused.
All right. My name is Adam King. I'm the district manager over at the Dodge Soil and Water Conservation District. And I'm also the day-to-day contact for the planning process for the One Watershed One Plan, for the Cedar River. So if you go back to kind of what water planning used to be, really it was done planned on county boundaries, right? And so what this process is really doing is kind of going beyond the county boundaries and going up into Dodge and going over into Freeborn and making one plan for the whole watershed area. And traditionally, it's really been more of a Soil and Water Conservation District and a county effort. And in this process, we felt like, how can we have a comprehensive watershed plan without the city of Austin? So we invited you guys to be a part of the planning process. And we've asked you guys if you wanted to appoint one of your council members to the policy committee, similar to what our supervisors and what the commissioners have been doing. And you guys appointed Steve King back probably a couple of years ago when we started the planning process. Well, the plan is starting to wrap up and get complete. So I have a copy here. If any of you want to take a look at it, you're more than welcome to. The plan is also hosted on the Maurer Soil and Water Conservation District website. So I just kind of wanted to go through the plan, hopefully pretty quick with you. And if you had any questions, you can ask them along the way. So the plan really starts out, pretty comprehensive, what do you call it, inventory of the watershed, right? It goes through all of the water resources, it goes through kind of the soil types and the topography, it goes through the water quality of the county, the entire watershed. And it goes through a lot of the, not plans, but a lot of the stuff that has already been done in the watershed. Kind of moving on into section four, we went through an extensive prioritization process. We took a look at a lot of the resource concerns that we have in the watershed, and then we prioritized them. Took a look at the top eight, I guess, and we took a look at accelerated erosion and sedimentation, surface water quality degradation, excessive flooding, groundwater, degraded soil health, threatened groundwater supply, threats to fish and wildlife habitat, and reduced livability and recreation. And so we, the elected officials, all the staff, and the state agency people all kind of took a look at those eight priorities and ranked them all. And what we kind of came up with was tiered them out into three separate tiers, tier one, tier two, and tier three priorities. What came into the tier one priorities really was the accelerated erosion and sedimentation, the surface water quality degradation, excessive flooding, and groundwater contamination. All three or all four of those were in the tier one priorities. Next was tier two priorities, degraded soil health and threatened groundwater supply, trying to make sure that there's going to be enough groundwater to sustain any sort of drinking or any groundwater needs. The last, the tier three priorities were really fish and wildlife habitat and reduced So with those priorities, we went on to take a look and establish measurable goals. And really, that kind of gets into the weeds of the plan. But really, it's establishing goals for all of those tier one activities. Next was targeting areas. So now that we have those priorities identified, we were going to identify areas that we should start implementing, a lot of the projects that will be associated with the plan, and where we're going to be implementing those, right? And so we have a large watershed area, and where in the watershed are we going to focus our efforts on? And that really took us into, you know, taking a look at groundwater priority areas and anything with a stream impairment, really. And some of those hotspots over kind of by Lake Geneva. And then even like around the city of Austin, there's some really good groundwater hotspots that we're going to focus our priorities on. And there's some really good maps in the plan. We can take a look at those at any time if you want to as well. And then chapter seven really is the final part, and how we're actually going to implement the plan. Taking a look at our efforts for projects practices, how those are going to be implemented, taking a look at any of the education outreach activities and how those are going to be implemented, and some of the other regulatory activities, and how those need to be implemented as well. So the plan really covers an extensive array of everything, and Bowser is going to be taking a look at it, the Board of Water and Soil Resources is going to be taking a look at it coming up here in the near future. Next steps that we have for the plan, state agencies have already kind of taken a look at the plan and have commented on it. The next step is we have to have a public hearing on it. So that public hearing is yet to be, our policy committee is going to meet, the next meeting is going to be on the 4th, and they're going to establish that public hearing. We're going to have a lot of outreach activities, trying to advertise for that public hearing and take any input that the public or anybody else may have for the plan. After that, then we're going to submit it to the Board of Water and Soil Resources, where they'll take a look at it and hopefully approve it within their 90-day timeframe. Once that happens, it's going to come back to us and you guys. And the city of Austin then will take a look at the plan, and they'll adopt it as their own plan as well, their own comprehensive watershed management plan. The same thing is going to happen with Maurer County, Maurer SWCD, same thing with Dodge County, Dodge SWCD, and Freeborn County and Freeborn SWCD, as well as the watershed districts, Turtle Creek Watershed District and the Cedar River Watershed District. So all of them are going to adopt it as their own plan for that area that they cover. And with adopting the plan then, that's going to open up a larger stream of funding. There's going to be watershed-based funding associated with it. And then for you guys too, it's going to open up an opportunity for you to apply for some of those clean water fund grants.
Yeah. Yeah. What it really means, you know, cities typically don't have comprehensive watershed management plans. You guys have a number of different plans that you do throughout the year, but you haven't been involved with water plans. And so it brings you together with the water plants that are going on right now in the watershed. And at the end of the day, what this means is it means additional resources that we can leverage back down here to help do projects that impact the community. One of the things that we've been working on, we, Soil and Water Conservation District for a number of years, is projects that are upstream, not necessarily in Austin, but close to Austin. Laura, we worked with you in another capacity on projects when we were working with the foundation on identifying some projects upstream that would actually keep the waters cleaner that are in the community of Austin. So we've had a couple of focus areas that we've been working on, and just an illustration of how this impacts the city, right? So if you have clean water upstream, you have clean water in the community. We've worked with the Department of Natural Resources over the last couple of years to try to make our case that we're doing enough water quality improvement on Wolf Creek, which is the stream that comes through Todd Park, that we've made strides and we're making an impact on that part of the watershed so that we could support trout fishing in that particular stream. And that's been a goal of the district. And to do that, you have to make a case for yourself. You have to prove that you're taking measures to protect the land and that the resource is going to be, is going to support trout. As you guys know, we live in a pretty heavily agricultural community, and so we're having to balance, you know, the great things that come with having a good agricultural community with some of the water quality issues. And so we've had landowners that have stepped up and participated in programs that are protecting the watershed. And a lot of those programs are the things that are identified in this plan. And so tomorrow, we're going to announce that publicly, that we're going to have trout fishing in Wolf Creek, that the DNR is going to designate that as a trout fishery. And so down the road, this is going to be, we think, a great community project for the community, the kids, and all the folks that kind of enjoy natural resources. And that came in part because we had a commitment to water resource issues upstream. And so I think it's a great credit. In the watershed planning process, just for your idea, there are not big communities that are part of this planning process. I think that was forward-thinking of Austin to get involved with this project. And I'm not from here, I'm a transplant, but for any of you that have heard me talk ever, you've heard me say, Austin is a special area. Our community is a special area. We're, especially in natural resource work, this is a very forward-thinking area. And I think it's reflected really well in the opportunity that we had where all you, you hear a lot about how our degraded water resources are happening, when in fact, we're having improvements in some of these streams to the point where we start supporting trout fishing. So Todd Park's going to be a focus area for us, for the fishing activity down the road, for the stocking program that'll happen next year. So we just wanted, if there was, you know, we're going to have park folks out there from the city, if there's a council member or somebody that wanted to come out.
The time is it tomorrow, I find I'm going.
10:30.
Sorry, Jason. Go again. Yeah, I'll be out there. If any of you have questions, we also want to come here, we're welcome.
Yeah, well, it'd be great to have you. It's not going to be, it'd just be an announcement and just some recognition that we're going to start letting the community know that this is a resource that's available and that we're kind of proud of it, and we're happy that it's going to be something going forward.
Where are you meeting tomorrow? At Todd Park, Todd Park, where are at?
It's, let's see, you guys know way better than I do. There's a pavilion.
Yeah.
What's the pavilion name out there, Stephen, maybe?
The largest pavilion.
The largest pavilion? Should we go with the largest one, Kevin? Yeah, Kevin knows.
Are you going to be there, Kevin?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that'll be fun. You should be proud of yourself. That's, it's kind of surprising that we can get a river to, or a creek to the point that it would sustain a trout. Is that going to be just within the park limits, or is the fishing going to extend beyond that, or don't you like to talk about?
Well, I think the resource will extend beyond there. It's just the access, the immediate access will be in the park, right? Because I think that there's a lot of public property on either side of the park. So that's why the city is so important to making this successful, because a lot of the fishing is going to actually take place in Todd Park where we have access.
Just having it, I think, is a point of pride.
Absolutely. I agree.
Good. I have another question. Okay, that's all right. Oh, is this going to be a yearly thing then where they get stocked? Do they get stocked several times a year? And you're not looking for any natural production in there or anything, are you?
Not immediately, no. We're going to need some help through stocking. But we've got a commitment from them to start stocking mature fish right away. So it wouldn't have to be, we're not just going to get little ones, we've got to wait a few years for them to take off either. They're going to, it's going to be a put and take. So they'll put them in, and we can start fishing right away. And then it'll be something we continue to monitor over time if we can support smaller fish. You know, hopefully, we continue the work that's in the plan, we keep doing good things for the resources, and we keep building our case back to DNR that this is something worth their investment, for their investment.
Well, that's good. It really is a point of pride that we can do that. It surprises me that, you know, we can have a creek in town that sustains trout like that. So that's good. Absolutely, good job.
So we have a number of private landowners and citizens that have made great commitments and going forward to make this happen. You know, this comes from, a lot of this comes from people making decisions on their land that helps the rest of us. So the credit goes to them.
Good, good. Great. Council?
I just want to comment that I commend you on the work that you do. Not only do you get to work with farmers and private landowners, you also get to work with units of government and the DNR over projects that are years long. And so that by definition takes a lot of perseverance and a lot of bringing people together, and it's really important work. Like you said, if you stop your watershed planning at a county boundary, it's pretty hard to get big change through. So really appreciate what you guys do. Austin is different, Austin is lucky. And we do have lots of residents that are forward-thinking and think about the whole community, but we also have great agencies and great staff that run them and do this work. So, good job, keep going.
Great partners. Yep.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do whatever we can. Number four, are we done now?
Yes.
Thank you. Number four, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Also during the thing, Apollo came in, and she is our new honorary council member for the performance. I'm not sure what we do. We'll talk to you a little bit at the end of the meeting and see how you think, what you think, and maybe you can tell us a little bit about yourself, okay? So now we'll go to a public hearing. Number five is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application for housing and redevelopment. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. Before this is a tax abatement request for the HRA in Riverland to put forward a house. They have come up with a creative way on the lot. HRA is partnering with that at potentially no cost, but could recoup costs as well depending upon the final sale of the property. Our tax abatement policy doesn't allow any other financial incentives, but I think it's our opinion that this would still be consistent with our policy. It's a $200,000 project, and this is a public hearing. We'd request approval of the abatement.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Council, any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution to either approve or deny.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Banker.
Councilmember Pashusta?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Baskin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin?
Aye.
Resolution passes, six-year, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number six is a motion reviewing a tax abatement application from Randy and Deidra Smith. Craig?
Members, you recall, we continued this abatement request several times, and we want to have the public hearing as a continuation today. This is consistent with our housing tax abatement policy. Council action is requested to approve it, and this is a public hearing.
Okay. I mean, are we going to continue it? Is that what you want, or?
I hadn't heard of, we ready to approve?
Are we ready to approve, right?
Still need to continue.
Motion is to continue it to September 3rd. They were still working on the title, and the county and the school have continued their hearings too, just so we don't have additional publication costs at the time when they're ready. So we'll just keep continuing it to save us some cost on the road.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Pose seven, reviewing a tax abatement application from Maurer County Development Group, LLC. Craig?
All right, members, this is the proposed 56-unit hotel, which requires a $5.8 million of improvement, looking in the downtown area. The county and school district have considered this in their public hearings and unfortunately turned the proposal down. The city's portion would be capped at $85,000. This is an overall request to abatement of $200,000. The Port Authority agreement required all three taxing jurisdictions to participate, so should council approve this, we would need to see if the Port Authority were willing to reconsider or otherwise would fail for lack of satisfying the development agreement. The payback if all three entities were to participate was 2.8 years. We have some focus on the downtown, and there's been some concern about participating in this project when other hotels in the community. We have had specific focus on facade improvements in the downtown. We haven't obviously done that in other areas. Some of the recognition from the downtown master plan, call-out hotel for the downtown area with interest in promoting that, and is consistent with our comprehensive plan. This helps with the vibrancy of the downtown. I think there's auxiliary benefits to the rec center that we have coming forward, our hockey arenas, the Bruins downtown, and certainly the Paramount. So Craig Hoyam is here this evening, and he'd like to address the council, and this is a public hearing.
Craig, why don't you come on up and, we all know Craig, well, most of us know Craig, he worked for us.
Mayor, City Council, my name's Craig Hoyam, and I'm here to represent the Maurer County Development Group. I think I've made presentations to you before in regards to this proposed development. Wanted to just give you a brief update as far as where we are at with the project. As Mr. Clark said, went through a number of meetings with both the school district and the county trying to pursue tax abatement, and both of those groups denied that request. Some things we've been doing since we last met, we revisited our feasibility study with our consultant. When that document was originally drafted, it did include in with the calculations that there would be an additional hotel built in Austin. But even with that, we had our consultant revisit all those calculations, and that outcome stated that it would be a viable project for downtown Austin. If you look at other projects, like with the Main Street project, I think as of 2014, there was about $1 million invested into the downtown with storefront improvements. And a lot of those improvements, most of them, I think 50% of those improvements were subsidized from one way or another. With our requested tax abatement, we are looking at strictly site improvements. Any building that would be built on that site would have to have these soil corrections done. If you look at the guidelines for approving tax abatements, that's specifically, you know, to improve blighted areas of the community, whether it's tearing down structures, which has already been done on this site, or soil corrections. It's just an extra cost for the development, and the development team would like to move forward with the project, even with the denial of the county and the school district. If you look at the tax abatement requested, our project is actually estimated at $6.5 million. The tax abatement amount would consist of 1.2% of that cost. As Mr. Clark said, in both the comprehensive plan and the downtown plan, it specifically addresses supporting hotel development for the downtown area and the Fourth Avenue Northwest Otherwise, I don't know if there's any other questions, you know? And if you look at tax abatement, like in the year 2018, in the state of Minnesota, there was 116 actions made by counties, cities, and school districts to approve tax abatement projects totaling over $16 million. So it is a widely-used subsidy in the state, and the Holiday Inn in Austin was supported by Tiff District that probably went on for 20 years. We're asking for just something to...
You said you think the project's still viable without abatement from the county and the school board, or in order to go back?
The soil improvements are part of our financial plan, that there wouldn't be a cost to the development team associated with that.
But what I'm asking is, is it still viable financially without that? I mean...
I teamed up with Dave Hartenko from Apollo Development, and I talked to him last week about that, because I wasn't unsure what the position was going to be with the city. And he said he would have to look at those numbers closely.
Okay, so you don't know. So we're just basically keeping it alive right now. Okay. Council, questions, comments?
Do we know what the payback is if it's just the city? Is that still the 2.8 years on the city's?
Yeah, I'd have to run the calculation. Our share of the overall tax burden is 42.5% of the share.
Yeah, we're not looking at the total. I think initially, it was up to $200,000. We're just looking at what the city shares.
Right. So we given abatement? You've got financing to cover the, excuse me? You've got financing then to cover the difference between what the county and the city, or the school board isn't kicking in?
Well, we, I mean, we've been continually recruiting investors for the project. I think right now, besides Mr. Hartenko and myself, there's 10 local Austin business people that are very supportive of the project.
Have we contacted by some of them?
So you haven't totally solved it yet, but the funding gap isn't totally solved, but you're working on it? Is that accurate?
No, but we, I mean, we're tied up with a local CPA firm, and there's some, I mean, we've dealt with some staff people in Kansas City with that same firm, and there's very positive reaction to the project.
I mean, I'd say from my perspective, you know, downtown's unique in that it drives people into the heart of the city. I can't tell you how many conversations I have with people who come to visit, Hormel on Business, who have never seen anything of the city other than Jimmy John's and the Holiday Inn. In fact, we're full from a hotel perspective, most of the time now, and people end up being, staying over in Rochester, which just pains me to hear. And from an economic standpoint, you know, we give an abatement, we get that paid back essentially within three years, and then into perpetuity, we've got a $6 million-plus building. So I would say from a city standpoint, from my standpoint, I'm very supportive of it. Obviously, there's other conversations, you know, from a financing and a building standpoint, but it seems perfect to drive folks into downtown Austin. I think it's a relatively minimal investment from a city standpoint, and it's got a positive economic return, which is what we're supposed to do.
The estimated tax generation is $85,000 to $200,000 a year.
Wow, what I like about it is it's a perfect fit for what we're trying to do on Fourth Avenue. We keep talking about Fourth Avenue. You know, we don't see that develop. It's going to be sort of developed, but I think something like this is a good fit, and it would help further development down the road, obviously. So, I mean, for people that think this is a fly-by-night thing, this has been going on for two years probably, working on this project, so it's...
Any support would be greatly appreciated.
All right. Any else?
I guess, you know, the Main Street project, granted, we've invested a lot of money on Main Street, but I think that's to upgrade buildings and storefronts, and it doesn't create a competitive advantage one way or the other for those businesses that have participated in that program that I can see, where we've got other projects, in-town hotel projects specifically, that granted, they're not downtown, but they're building on their own financing with no concessions from the city. And so I'm kind of hard-pressed to, you know, as Mr. Baskin mentioned, I think there is a need for the rooms, and if there is a need for the rooms, then there should be financing brought forward from the financial group or be able to get backing without having to come to the city like these other projects have done. So I'm kind of questioning whether we need to invest in the circle.
So I have to disagree and say you're glossing over the biggest factor, which is the downtown location. The downtown location on the blighted area where...
But you're talking hotel versus hotel. I mean...
I guess, you know...
You're talking hotel at a edge of the community location versus a downtown location. To me, the downtown location is the factor that makes it worth supporting, and those other hotels didn't come to us asking for it, and we said no.
No.
No, they will be now.
Yeah, they are now, but it's kind of...
I mean, we've got one that's in progress of building that paid full price for the land, didn't ask for anything else. So...
I think it's a valid point, but at the same time, what I've said right from the start is if they want to build a hotel downtown, we talk to them about some help. If they want to build a hotel by the post office, we talk to them. You know, if, you know, scenario other than, that we can... You know, if, you know, if an area other than, that we can direct and help do something with an area where it's not just a hotel, it's a magnet to help build the area up, at that point, I think I'd, we'd be willing to help. I'd be willing to help a lot of different people, so I think the downtown location makes a difference.
I can't speak for the other development, but, and I, I've met the owner of that and have had discussions with him and I would, I would guess that if that site needed soil corrections, that he would have probably made the same request.
Right now, I think we've got three people talking about building a hotel, other than your group, and nobody expects all three of those to get built, whether or not your hotel goes in. That's just kind of what people are saying and now they're kind of waiting to see what we do here, to be honest with you. But, anybody else? All right, then we need a motion to, what do we need a motion? Oh, to approve our tax abatement? One way or the other, approve or deny? It's a public hearing. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on this? Open to the public. For or against, whatever. All right, so we need a motion, one way or the other.
I move to approve.
You move to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Nay.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Nay.
Resolution passes 4-2, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Well, Craig, good luck getting the rest of it put together.
Yes, good luck.
I think it'd be a nice project if we can get it done. All right, let's move on. We're at number...
We're at number eight.
Number eight, under petitions and requests approving Hormel Foundation grants. Tom, we went through this, we spent a lot of time on this, I think basically everybody knows what we're talking about, but go ahead.
We did the rankings based on all council members' requests for how they ranked everything and number one came out on top was the Austin Police Department drone for 42,792. Then, as you can see, the other 11 requests below it, how they rank in the council's priority list. In addition to that, there is a quality of life grant that we request. It's outside of that allocation process, but it has to flow through somebody for the Art Center, for Leadership Austin, and for the Fourth of July Festival, so we'll ask for that outside. In addition to that, something we did not talk about the last meeting, however, is some requests that historically had gone through the Vision 2020 process, that now the city will be requesting some out-of-budget dollars for the I-90 corridor where we have two bridges that are in MinDOT's plans for 2021 to get upgraded. So the request will be to put the brick and the facade on those like was done at the QuickTrip I-90 Exit 1. And then additionally, a community entrance sign that again would come out of budget from the Hormel Foundation as part of a request, so we need to get them in the pipeline to see if they would approve them so that Min-, we can work with MinDOT to get them scheduled in. So we just request a motion from council requesting those grants.
Any discussion? If not, we need a motion for eight.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number nine, reviewing ordinance to bring the local option sales tax ordinance to compliance with intervening changes in the law. Craig, be fired.
Hopefully, this is a non-controversial item. We passed a similar ordinance back when the sales and use tax, what we call loss taxes, were put into place. And there has been some changes in the law that deal mostly with the way Minnesota revenue sort of collects and distributes back some of those funds. And so Minnesota revenue through the league has been contacting cities to take a look at the materials that we passed back at the beginning and they've given us advice to make some slight changes to the words and terms used in our ordinance and have asked us if we wouldn't be so kind to pass it, just so that whatever they're doing on our behalf is not flying in the face of the legal requirements that govern them.
It's more cosmetic than anything.
It is absolutely, it won't make a change really from the way that we experience loss taxes. It's mostly just to make sure that we're using the right terms for their process.
It has something to do with the Wayfair state, federal sales tax or internet sales are taxable and they just want to make sure that they're in compliance so they don't have any issues.
Counsel, anything? If not, a motion for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, then we need an ordinance for adoption of public, Jeff, you do that.
Move for adoption of publication of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 11 is a motion reviewing a premise gambling application for desperate tears at the B&amp;J Bar and Grill. Ms. Hazel?
Yes, we had passed this a couple months ago and there was some additional requirements from the state, so we're just bringing the same thing back so they can have the desperate tears take over their gambling at the B&amp;J.
Anything from the council? If not, we need a resolution for 10.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 11 is a motion reviewing a community festival application for Harvest Fest at the B&amp;J Bar and Grill. Ms. Hazel?
Yes, our community festival applications have become quite popular this year since we changed the language in that, so this would be an additional application for Harvest Fest. That was just what they're calling their outdoor music event at the B&amp;J. So if the council wanted to review that and place any conditions on it, we just wanted to bring it to the council separately.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a motion for 11.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Twelve is a motion appointing Astir, is that how you say your name? Apollo is the honorary council member. Craig, I got your name here.
Yeah, members wanted to go ahead and we've generally done this on a three-month basis, so September, October, November be the term. If council's agreeable, this is the recommendation from the mayor for our honorary council member.
Yeah, we'll talk to you after the meeting. We have a spot after the meeting where we, yeah, we'll ask you a little bit about yourself. Okay, we need a motion. Any questions?
Maybe we want to know before we approve her.
Yeah. Okay, tell us about yourself.
I've got more questions about the next guy at the appointment.
I'll stand up.
It's a good point, though. I mean, why not before?
Right now, when we're...
Oh, what should I tell, what do you want to...
Well, you know, just a little bit of your history and what, how did you get here?
Okay.
I mean, you know, sitting right here, how did, like the 30-second version.
Okay.
Not 30 seconds.
So my name is Astir Apollo. I, I am representing the Corin Community in Austin, Austin here in town, and I actually was recommended by George Bayes to apply for the honorary position and I would like to learn more about what our city do and I actually don't really know a lot about what city councils do, so that it'll be an interesting factor for me. And then I'll also, would like to give, if able, I would like to give what our community have gone through and then what's something that we can improve in our minority communities as well.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or anything? Oh, how could you vote no after that?
Exactly. Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, number 13 is a motion appointing Michael Stoll to the Pillars Committee, term expiring 12/31/20. And?
Yes, we had a vacancy on the Pillars Committee due to some health reasons, so the mayor and I reviewed the applications and we would like to appoint Michael Stoll.
Any questions?
Seems very controversial, I would think.
I know, there's an obligation on the chair.
I think, and we need more applicants for this also because we're going to be, terms are expiring this year and we need to do some more appointments. Need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 14 is a motion approving the sale of equipment from the wastewater treatment plant. Stephen?
Yes, just a request to get rid of some surplus equipment at the upcoming Hamilton auction sale.
Okay. Anybody, any questions? If not, let's have a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 15 is a resolution awarding a contract for residential asbestos removal. Holly?
Holly's not here today, so I'll cover that one. So these are a couple properties that were previously approved by council for hazardous structures and we started that process. First step is asbestos abatement. We have three bids with the low bid being the local company asbestos all in the amount of $4,270, so we'd recommend approving that for properties 408 8th Avenue Southeast and 1700 5th Avenue Northwest.
Need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dankert.
Councilman, excuse me, Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 16 is a resolution approving a 2019 special appropriation general obligation grant, bond grant. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor, members. This is a special appropriation grant application. This is our formal application for the funding from the state. Our obligation, as members will recall, is limited to $475,000. We did acknowledge what we don't necessarily think is a conflict of interest, but Steve King is obviously both a city council member and a KSMQ board member. We denoted that in the application just to be on the safe side and otherwise, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 17 is a resolution declaring the property at 1,023rd Avenue Southwest a hazardous structure. Any questions? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 18 is a resolution declaring the property at 908 23rd Avenue Southwest a hazardous structure. Same thing, any questions? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is this a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Series of motions of either six of them granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at A 906 4th Avenue Northwest to Garcia property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B 1104 5th Street Northwest, the Austin property, need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? C 1810 2nd Avenue Southeast, SE property, need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? D 1,006 13th Avenue Southwest, Bank of America property.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? E 1812 Oakland Avenue East Affordable Rental Property, need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, F Oakland Avenue East, Arubal property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess we got one more. Granting the planning zoning department the contract for fence maintenance at 1,004 2nd Avenue Northeast, the Hwari property. Any questions on this? Otherwise, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We got the additional item.
We have an addition. Item number 21 is our addition, it's a resolution approving a conditional agreement with Ryder Bike Shop LLC.
That's mine.
Okay, why don't you tell us about this?
You bet. This is a follow-up on discussion we have with council before about the Colony Bike donation. This is structured to come through Ryder Bike. This will be at no cost to the city and allows us to drop the program if unsuccessful. We'll be working with the donors to determine its successfulness. Ryder is responsible for the maintenance of the bikes. We do have the liability exposure for, for the bikes. Should somebody, you know, we have some protections built into it, but I guess there's never 100% protection, but we have, do absorb some potential liability, though the users will sign a liability waiver as part of the process. Steve Keim is here. Steve, if you wanted to add some comments to the agreement and Craig Byram has been instrumental in making sure we're protected as much as possible in the parameters council set out. Otherwise, we need approval of the agreement.
Thank you, Craig and Mayor, members of council. Yeah, several weeks ago, I brought this to the council and as a proposal. It's taken some time, but thanks to Craig Byram and Craig Clark for working through all of these, all of the legalities, I'll call them, that we need to do to get this done. So if you, if you haven't seen it, there's a bike parked right outside. That is an example of one of the bikes. We have six of those bikes we're going to donate to the city and as Mr. Clark said, we will be the pilot team for the, for the time that we need to prove the, if the project either works or it doesn't. The pilot team can decide at any time, this isn't working, we could end it. However, we're hoping the outcome will be, that it will be successful once we get all the bugs worked out, if there are any, and at that time, we'll bring to the council all of our data that we have accumulated, the ridership, and a recommendation to either expand it, go with it as it is, or, and it might be just to drop the whole thing if that were the recommendation. But we want to give it a shot, we want to give it a try, see how it works in Austin, Minnesota. So with that, I'd be happy to donate six bikes to the city.
Steve, when would the program start?
Sweeten the deal.
Well, I think, Mr. Clark, what we need to do, once we get the approval, is do some education, first of all, and people need signage or whatever, what we need to do to make sure that people know how the program works, and you can't assure, you can't have success if people don't know what they're doing. We want to make it, we'll work with Colony Bike Share. They'll come give us some training, and so, yeah, we don't, the season is coming to an end fairly soon, but we hope to get some time in, if we can. We'll have September, and then going into next year, we can go all out on it and see how it works.
Probably important, if you get a little bit in next year, you can learn for next year, make it even better, and this program's been successful just about everywhere it's been, hasn't it?
Right, right. It has, or have not been. It's been great success, yeah.
Yeah, so...
And so to the point that even in Rochester, they're using a similar, they're using scooters in Rochester. They're trying, as a pilot program, they're doing scooters. I think that's a good way to do it, to test it out, make sure it works, and then...
Yeah, good.
Make sure it works.
I know you put a lot of work into this.
Any other questions?
Council? Otherwise, we need a resolution for item number 21.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. We're basically done with our meeting. Are there any citizens here tonight that wish to address the council on any issues? Yes, sir. Come on up, give us your name and your address, and tell us your concerns.
I'll be very quick.
Whatever it takes.
My name is Tim Weinman. I'm at 709 2nd Avenue Northeast. I'm here to ask you guys to open up your discussions again about the Lion Park housing acquisition.
What, Lions Park housing application?
Acquisition. You guys were, it's a flooding area.
Yeah.
And it's been, I think, about six years since you guys were talking about it, and...
It's been, not six years, maybe three years?
No, it's been, I believe, six, maybe five.
Okay.
He's talking about flooding specifically.
I know in the past, you guys, over time, have bought out other sections of town, and if there wasn't enough interest, you bought the ones that were interested and acquired the other ones over time.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm asking you to at least, what I'm asking for tonight is can you send out a letter again to the residents in that area to see if there's interest? I believe there is. I believe there's more interest than the interest you got last time, which was 45% or something. So can we send another letter out?
Well, Stephen, are we, do we have funds for that now? I know at certain times, we do it because we have funds available on programs. Do we have funds available for that? Is that something we could look at, or...
We currently don't have funds available for it. Things changed with this neighborhood after the 2013 reclassification of the floodplain, and originally, we had identified 17 homes pretty much right across the river from us that were within the floodplain. After the area was rezoned and reclassified, many of those homes were, again, because in 1988, when the floodplain was first designated, they were using 1988 information.
Right.
25 years later, in 2013, they reevaluated them with more up-to-date information, more accurate data, and many of the homes in that neighborhood, many of those 17 homes, were removed from the floodplain. So it drives the equation, it drives the process for flood protection or acquisition, it drives it to a different direction. So if we were to look at the area again, our current policy is to acquire homes that are in the floodplain, or to acquire additional homes slightly outside of the floodplain if it allows us to remove public infrastructure. So that is something we can bring back to the council at a future discussion, to look at the area, look at what the different options are, and talk about how to move forward to help the neighbor, give the neighbors some direction. They have been sitting in limbo for five or six years, not knowing if we were going to acquire them, if we're going to protect them, if we're going to do nothing. So it would be helpful to provide not only them some direction, but also it'll give us some direction for our local option sales tax and how we're budgeting for future projects as well.
That's something we're going to be bringing up and looking at in this year yet, or...
Yeah, we can bring that to you yet this fall, and then provide more information back to the property owners.
Because we wouldn't even know right now, you know, that wasn't something we were looking at five or six, I was thinking of something else, but yeah, five or six years ago, and we're not, you know, it isn't, right now, I don't know if we could do it, but we'll bring it up again and make a decision. It sounds like there's more owners that want to do it, but your odds of it probably went down a little bit when they did the rezoning.
Possibly. All I'm asking for is another letter to see...
Are you still on the floodplain, your house?
Yes, I have two, currently two flood insurances.
Okay.
My bank will not let me go down to one. They insist on two, because they insist I'm in a flood zone, and we, whether we get flooded or not, we do sandbag on a regular basis over there.
How many houses do you have there?
17, I believe.
And how many are yours?
One.
You live there?
Yes.
Okay. Not a rental, I guess that's what I'm asking.
No, it's mine. I don't rent it.
Okay, good, okay. Yeah, we'll look at it again, and when we do, if you're still in the floodplain, you know, there's a good, we'll have to see what the council decides.
All right, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming in and bringing it to our attention.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Otherwise, we'll do the council thing. We'll start with Paul.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Austin Artworks Festival is coming up this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Thank you to our honorable mayor. He is already down for a volunteer shift, and so is Craig Clark and his wife. Anybody else who might want to put in two hours volunteering? That would be great. It takes hundreds of volunteers to run the Austin Artworks Festival, and, you know, honestly, I've done it. I think that the music just sounds a little better after you volunteered. The art just looks a little prettier.
You're invested.
Yeah, you're invested. You do your two hours, and you go have fun and enjoy. So it's Saturday, nine to five, Sunday, 10 to four. Max Weinberg is coming Saturday night to the Paramount. It is, just to answer apparently some questions that have been on the community, it is the real Max Weinberg. It is not a tribute to Max Weinberg. It is the real, actual drummer for Bruce Springsteen, Max Weinberg. So we hope you can be there, and it's a great weekend for Austin. There's also the bike race in town, so if you need a hotel room, it's already too late, and we...
Maybe we should go to, huh?
I'm not even going to go there, but the point is, we want to have lots of weekends like this in Austin, so get out and enjoy, and bring your friends and family down, buy some art.
If people want to volunteer, who do they contact?
Contact Kelsey at the Artworks Center, 434-0934. You can also go to our website and send an email. It's an all-online signup. We use a service called signup.com, and so it sends you an automatic reminder of when your shift is and all kinds of stuff, so it's pretty slick.
It's kind of a nice way of doing it. It's the first time I've done it like that. It was pretty good. Is that it?
Yep.
Well, thank you. It will be a fun weekend, Jeff.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Joyce? Greg?
I don't. Mr. Dankert has something. I don't know anyone else.
Just one change. At the June 17 meeting, we passed a resolution with the Secretary of State over our state fire aid. I think we'd indicated in the memo that there might be some slight changes. League of Minnesota Cities reviewed it, and they asked us to add three words to the resolution first special session, so we did that without rescinding and coming back to you for another resolution, so we just wanted to update council on that.
You did that without checking with us?
No, we checked with you. You signed it.
I was just going to bring that up. No, you walked right into that one. I'll get you. Okay, anything else?
As long as he's the only one on the work floor tonight.
Apollo, we talked to you already, so, you know, we have you down on the agenda to talk to you at this and after the work session. I don't know if we're, if you want to say anything else after the work session, but welcome, and, you know, I think we've had George and Rain, and, you know, George was very active and, you know, and stuff. Rain kind of was quiet, but...
Solomon.
You know, Solomon, so, you know, just feel comfortable, you know, you're not expected to do a lot, you can just learn, you know? It's a, it's a, it's a good learning system. I talked to Rain afterwards, and, you know, he says he's just amazed at how much stuff he picked up. He just didn't realize that our system, how it ran and everything, so, and I don't know if that you'll have to have the same effect on you, but it'll be very valuable. And plus, we expect some insight in your community, too. That's why you're here, you know? All right, with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll take a short break and meet in the conference room across the hall.